Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Thursday, February 16th, 2023. As you can see, we're a very small group tonight. We do have a quorum, but we are missing Jeff and Kevin, who are not able to attend tonight. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV, and an audio recording is being made by Jamie Wickston. If we could rise for the pledge. All right, so the first item on the agenda tonight is public participation. We are going to stick with the times on the agenda, so we will have 20 minutes of public participation. We'll just ask whoever would like to speak, we'll just ask you to keep it to three minutes, as Kevin has been doing. And so, is there anyone who would like to address the committee? Come on up. Hi Lynn.
Hi. Okay. So, I'm here on behalf of the PARRAS. My name is Lynn Peterson. I have been a PARRA at Deccus and now at Wareham Elementary for 18 years. This year, I'm assigned as a Boost PARRA, and I want to explain to the committee, parents and taxpayers, what a Boost PARRA is. Our Boost program is a high-intensity ELA instruction program. The students in each grade are grouped based on their reading skills and abilities. The PARRAS are typically assigned to the lowest-level groups and work alongside a classroom teacher and a sped teacher. The goal of this model is to give the students high-intensity instruction in small groups to boost their reading capabilities to their grade level. I'm teaching reading skills in small groups in five grade levels. I see about 90 to 100 kids per week. Even sped teachers don't do that. We have a sped teacher for each grade level. They teach one grade. I teach five. There are grades I'm not familiar with. I don't know the curriculum, the expectations, or the benchmarks. When I am tasked with teaching a skill I've never taught before, I often teach myself how to teach it, through reading the teacher's manuals or watching online instruction videos, all on my free time. Also on my free time, I am creating games and hands-on activities to reinforce the skills that I'm teaching. All of us Boost PARRAS are doing that. What I've said here applies not just to myself and the My Fellow Boost PARRAS, but to all the PARRAS at Wareham Public Schools. We are co-teachers. Everyone knows that PARRAS assist the students with many non-academic needs throughout the day, like shoe tying and coat zipping and walks to the nurse and bathroom needs, but we also teach the same important academic skills that the teachers teach, and we deserve better recognition and respect for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Deanna Semple. I'm the president of our teachers' union. Currently, as you know, we're in negotiations with the school committee for our PARRAS, speaking more toward the public than to you all, since you all have heard this all before. But what the public may not know is that we've been in negotiations for over a year now. The fact is that the former superintendent and this school committee, other than probably Brennan, because I think he was not on board then, created a budget and supported a budget that the former superintendent made, that you all knew could not be supported. That's a fact. It was allowed to happen. It was reckless, irresponsible, and now the district expects the lowest-paid employees who work directly with the students of Wareham, as we just heard, to pay for that discrepancy. We are very aware, but the public may not be aware, of district employees who are making close to six figures or more than six figures, or six figures, for positions that have never been held in this district before, ever. They just popped up out of nowhere. So I just think that's an important statement that needs to be heard by the taxpayers and the voters in this town. The town received a lot of money for COVID, a lot of ESAR funds. We always talk about ESAR, but that's COVID money. It's still coming in. The budget is such and was made so poorly that you are still paying ESAR money that you don't even have yet to cover that budget problem. So, and now I'm going to just read real quickly a statement that was handed to me five seconds ago. "Taxpayers and PARRA professionals deserve a modicum of respect in regards to the following questions and concerns. Why were new positions at Wareham Elementary School created, and how were they originally funded? Were they funded from the original operating budget, grants, COVID funds, or a combination? If they were from COVID funds, how do you plan on funding them in the future? Why did you create them when you knew you had negotiations with PARRAS upcoming? Who proposed the new positions? What is the justification of the new positions? Why create new positions instead of properly funding the staff/PARAs you have in place who worked through the pandemic? Our PARRAS worked the whole pandemic, as did teachers. Why do we keep past principals on payroll?"
Deanna, I'm going to stop you, because what you're saying is, we're not going to discuss.
I know that you're not going to answer.
No, we're not going to discuss personnel. And the statement you're making leaves very little question about who you're talking to, and I won't, we won't have that. You know that we can't talk about specific people in public, that we're not going to do that.
The public should know that, and I've said it before and have not been stopped.
Well, you can share that with the public, but not here.
All of these questions and concerns need to be answered to the taxpayers of Wareham. PARRAS are tired of being an afterthought when it comes to negotiations and raises and shouldn't be left with whatever is left in the coffers after unnecessary spending has occurred. The result is a low-ball offer for a raise, staff departures, and disgruntled employees who are being told they matter but being shown the opposite, as in saying, as in the saying, "Actions speak louder than words." I will too note, because the public probably does not know this, we've lost 15 PARRAS this year in this district. Schools are having a hard time hiring them, because we are one of the lowest in the area. I don't know who we're going to get to fill those positions, but if I was a parent of a school-age child, I would be really concerned, because it's not going to be somebody professional, I'm sure. Thank you.
Yep.
I had no intentions of speaking, actually. My name's Marilyn Ramsey. I'm a PARRA at Wareham Elementary School with these guys. For perspective's sake, we got paid today, right? I have $14.31 in my bank account right now, after paying the other half of my rent and bills, and now it's vacation with my son. And what do I, what do I do? I make less than $400 every week. I made more than that at Cumberland Farms, selling cheap coffee. I could get a job in onset and walk to work, get rid of my car entirely, and make $20 an hour to make sandwiches for people, that I can say no to, and then get tips. We're not here because we have to be for any reason. We love the kids in this school. Some of us grew, I grew up here. I want it to be better, but it hasn't. And it's been 20 years, it's gotten worse. And these people, forget me, they taught my son how to talk. He couldn't talk until he was seven. He's nine. That's crazy. And it wasn't, it's not always academics. These are special education PARRAS. They're, they're teaching goals. He couldn't point at things. Like, he made vowel sounds, that's what he did, until three years ago. Not even three years, it hasn't even been three years. What are we worth? I could quit my job today and reapply for a custodial position and make almost $3 more than I make right now. And I've been teaching children to read what vowels are, how to do division, how to make sure you get things done. And this might come as a surprise, but children don't really want to learn math and how to read long words about places they've never been and will probably never be. But we show up every day and we do that, and we fight that every single day for $14.31 over vacation, so I can have a house and a car to come to work and make almost no money. I don't have to, I literally, I want to be here. But how long can I be here before I don't have the house and I don't have the car and I don't have the $14.31 in my bank account? What do I do? That's my, what do I do?
I'm sorry, we, we're not, this is public participation, I mean, I, we are not going to-
Just for thought, it's something to think about.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee? Come on up.
I was thinking, I heard a song on the way home that was an old song when I was younger, and it was "Day in the Life" by John Paul Georgian Ringo. And I would like to compare some of it to what life as a PARRA professional really is like. I read the news today, oh boy, Ms. Mary is subbing again. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Mary-
Yes.
Dionne Nielsen, I'm sorry. Anywho.
It's okay.
I find out usually either at 6:00 AM, if I'm lucky, or 8:25, if I'm not so lucky, where I'm working. I am a certified educator with a grad degree in curriculum instruction from Leslie, with a concentration in special ed and through NANS. You can kind of put me wherever, but I don't have any time to prepare for what's happening. So when I run home at night, in between swimming instructions, swimming coaches, safety trainings, which I run, et cetera, et cetera, I'm trying to run around at home and figure out if something, if I'm subbing somewhere and I haven't heard, what could I bring that would enhance? You know, subbing and instruction for everyone. But that's life as, as a PARRA for me. I usually find out between quarter past eight and 8:30, which means I'm not always at my assigned spot. And I rush to where, you know, second, fourth, whatever, and I, I look around, I'm thinking, okay, subs things are here. I run through, and all of a sudden, it's like 8:35, and it's like, hi, Mrs. Nielsen, we're here, which is wonderful. But, I mean, I truly don't think people realize what it is we work as. I mean, it's, I'll be honest, I put on between 15,000 and 20,000 steps every single day, and that's not swimming, you know, stuff. It's walking. But, I mean, I don't think people realize, you know, that you, you can't really walk in from wherever and say, oh, I want, I want to work as a PARRA, because it's just so, it's a lot. And I think those who are here are fabulous. And I wish people would realize exactly what it is our day in the life of a PARRA entails, with all due respect to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address?
Hi.
Hi Laura.
Hi, my name is Laura Schofield. I'm at the high school. I'm in the TLC program, the therapeutic learning program. And I'm the, I've been there in the TLC program for three years now. I've been with Wareham Public Schools for almost nine, Deccus onward and outward. I pretty much walk into my classroom every morning expecting to be told to F off, you know, but I know that they're not telling me to F off. They're telling whoever it was that told them yesterday or the day before, their parent or their guardian or whatever. They're internalizing it. They're dealing with a whole bunch of baggage, far more than we can ever think to, that they're dealing with. I have people tell me on a daily basis, they don't know how I do my job. I do my job because I love the kids. I definitely don't do it for the money. I definitely am qualified to do, I could be a teacher, but I, I have a qualification to get my emergency license tomorrow. But I believe that the relationship between a PARRA is to provide communication between the teacher and the student. Sometimes a student doesn't have the voice to go up to a teacher and tell them they're really upset that they got this bad grade on this test, or that they don't understand the heck the teacher's saying. And they'd rather just say the teacher's stupid and is full of crap than to acknowledge their own pain. So I'm the one who says, hey, you know what? You might not like the answer the teacher's going to give you, but I'm going to help you do that. I'm still going to help you learn how to express yourself and how to accept disappointment when you get it, or accept the reward for speaking up for yourself. I'm the tool, I'm the thread between the teacher and the, and the, and the student. So I should be treated as a professional, and I should be paid as a professional. I had today, I found out today that one of my friends who's leaving, there was a posting for the vocational PARRA position, and there was two people that came to interview, and they were told that they were being, starting off, it was posted on Indeed, that the post position was at $21 an hour. And the interviewer had to say, no, it's more like maybe 17, 18, if you base it on a nine-month, nine-month thing. Both people walked away. They said, no thanks, not enough. That's the vocational position. Even if any of us wanted to even step into the vocational position, there's so many holes in the program right now that they couldn't even pull us from my program to another program. You know, in three years, I'm the only one that's still at the TLC program at the PARRAS. We have that much turnover. In three years, only one of the teachers is the same teacher for three years. There's that much turnover. We need to be paid better so that we can stay here and enjoy our passion and still go home and take care of our own families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have two minutes left. If there's anyone else who'd like to speak to the committee? No? Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight. We did take good news off of the agenda, just in the interest of time, but can I just say congratulations to Mrs. Harunks and Mrs. Allen's class last night? They did such a great job with the Hall of Presidents. I learned so much from those kids last night. It was, they did such a good job. So the next item on the agenda is the business office report from Kristen Flynn.
Hi. Hi, Harrison. I'm here.
Hello.
Hello. In your packet tonight, you have your budget update and also some budget transfers. I'll go over the budget update first, if that's the pleasure of the committee.
Sure.
It's your, the typical report that I have, that I'm summarizing the major categories and what percent expended and encumbered that we are in our available balances that we have. As of January 31st, we have spent about, we're up to about 57% expended. So what we have left, we have encumbered for all of our typical expenses that we know of, utilities, tuitions, fuel, things like that, that we, that we do know of. We also have some salaries that are not encumbered, but we know that are going to remain to be paid. So that's why you see more, less, less spent in instruction, because that's heavy on the salaries.
Sorry about that. It is now, though.
Okay.
So, as I said, we've got, you have the graph that shows where we're at with the, with all of our major accounts. I do want to say that, you know, as, as usual, we're watching some accounts very closely. And those would be our utilities, and you're going to see a budget transfer for electricity right after this presentation for Wareham Elementary School. Some other accounts that I'm looking at right now is fuel, of course. I don't think this is a surprise, as the cost of fuel has changed considerably, and utilities since the budget was set last year. So we are going to be watching the fuel accounts, especially in our transportation lines that, for our school buses and vans. In terms of tuitions, out-of-district tuitions, we are fully encumbered in the local budget for tuition and transportation, and also in the grant that supports tuition. So what this means is that any other tuitions, they're being paid out of the Circuit Breaker account, and any, any new transportation or tuitions will have to come from the Circuit Breaker account. So that'll dip into anything that we may be carrying over into the following year, so that will be a source of relief for the local budget. So what I've done is taken a look at all of our accounts, line by line, and tried to anticipate where we're going to land as of June 30th. So I'm going through that exercise every few weeks, and I'll start to do it more frequently as we get closer to the fiscal year, as I see things changing. So as I said, some areas that I'm watching very closely is utilities, transportation, tuition. We will have some salary deficits that we're aware of, and so, all in all, there are some small surpluses in expenditure accounts in the local budget as a result of the budget freeze, but after taking those into consideration at this point, I think we're, we will still have to use any, any leftover Circuit Breaker funds at this time, perhaps some school choice funds as we get close to June 30th to try to, to balance the budget. But we're going to be watching that very closely. We are hopefully going to be applying for extraordinary relief, the Circuit Breaker program, for eligible expenditures that are more than 25, 125% over what you claimed. So we'll see if we're eligible for that, and that could be an additional source of funds for us, to help us with our out-of-district expenses. So does anyone have any questions on the budget as of right now?
Any questions? You answered most of my questions, but the extraordinary relief, is that something new?
No, it's a program that's been around for, I'm not sure how many years, but it's a complement to Circuit Breaker. And how it works is when you file for Circuit Breaker, for example, last July, end of June, July, the Special Education Department filed the Circuit Breaker claim. And that's based on your expenses that you had over the, the prior fiscal year. So that's going to be the funds that they give us this year. So what Extraordinary Relief recognizes is, maybe what's happened between last year, when you filed that claim for the money you're getting this year, you've had some students come into out-of-district placements or require transportation, because transportation is also reimbursable now through Circuit Breaker, or require more eligible services, whether it be related services. So what Extraordinary Relief does is it says to districts, if you think that you have had a jump in expenditures from when you filed in July, we're going to open up the claim form. So it's essentially, I think it's very similar to the same claim, you put in all of your expenses and you're anticipated for this year compared to last year, and if it is more than that threshold, the state will apply, will give you some additional extraordinary relief funds. So those have to be spent this fiscal year, because the idea is you're getting it because you've already made those expenditures. So it will help us if we, if we are eligible. That claim is going to be coming due in the next several weeks, so, you know, in the next couple of school committee meetings, I hope to have some information about that. So what will happen with that is we'll spend that money first, and then if there's anything left over, which I hope that there will be in regular Circuit Breaker, that can carry forward up to one year. So that becomes a little bit of a safety net for us for, for next fiscal year, if students come that weren't budgeted for. So that's how that works.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do you want to move on to the transfers?
Sure. So I do have two budget transfers. The first, one of them is strictly housekeeping. It's the Student Services Home Instruction. So that line item for years has been to fund, to pay for tutoring from contracted service providers, so not our employees. However, in the budget, it's coded as a salary. And so if you see the, when you look at the set of numbers, it's the one, two, three, the sixth portion in, so the O1, that means it's a professional salary. So you'd expect to pay payroll expenses through that. So we ran, even though that had been paying for contract service providers for several years, we ran into, we discovered that this year, that it perhaps isn't coded correctly, and that affects how expenditures get reported to the Department of Ed on the end-of-year report. So this here is just, I created the new correct account, the new correct function, which is an instruction account, 2440, and contract service, O4. That 2300 doesn't exist in the DESI chart of accounts, so there had to have been like a, you know, reconciliation for the end-of-year report. So this is the correct account that it should be in. And so in order to be able to pay out of that account for the remainder of the year, what we have to do is take the funds in the incorrect account and transfer them into the correct account. So all this is, is housekeeping. It's not because there's a deficit in this line or not, it's just putting it, coding it correctly. And there's, there'll probably be a few more of those, as I've gone through the end-of-year report, that I'll try to correct when we, when I program in the budget for next year, to program them to the correct account, so that it's reporting correctly to the Department of Ed. But this one here, we spend from it so frequently that I wanted to get it set straight for the rest of the year. So that's that budget transfer.
Okay. Do you want us to vote on them separately?
Whatever is your, would you prefer to do separately or together?
Okay. So is there a motion to approve this transfer as presented?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So 3-0-0.
Thank you. And the second transfer is one that we've seen before. It's to transfer some funds into the Wareham Elementary School utility account, primarily for the electric invoices. So we've taken a look to see, you know, what we anticipate based on what we've seen throughout the past several months, and I'm hoping that this, this last transfer of $80,000 will get us through to the end of June. There are some other expenses that come out of the utilities line that are, that we have coming up, that we're not sure, the water bills, what those will be or when they'll hit. So there's a possibility that I could be coming back- So there's a possibility that I could be coming back to you for some more funds, but I'm hoping this should, this should do it for Wareham Elementary School Utilities. And just, you know, as a point of information, the account was budgeted originally at 145,000. Year to date, we've transferred in 135, not including this 84, 85,000, 80,000 that I'm requesting. So I know that we did seek to add funds in the budget for next year, but it's been a perfect storm of, you know, not really knowing what the new school is going to consume and the spike in electricity costs. So it was the perfect storm. And I know all school districts are facing increased utilities and trying to figure out how to fund it. So I'm hoping that this transfer will be the last one, but that remains to be seen.
All right. Thank you. April.
So I know that it was hard to, pardon my voice, by the way. I like, it's like gone. I don't know why. My family's thrilled, but. I know that it was hard to project what the elementary school usage was going to be, but I was under the impression that it was as efficient of a building as it could possibly be. So the fact that we budgeted with that in mind, obviously, we know post pandemic inflation and utilities have gone through the roof. So I know that we've been transferring things into this particular school's utility budget. Where do the other schools stand difference wise with these increases in utility? Because you haven't come to us really for adding anything to the middle school's utility budget or the high school's utility budget. So how is it impact, the change of the increase in services affecting those schools? Because you haven't brought anything to us. And why is it so significantly more for the elementary?
So I'll take the first part of the question first. I don't have an exact explanation to that. But one thing that I do know is that, yes, the buildings are made to be more efficient. Size wise, I'm not sure how it compares. However, with this efficiency, there are so many systems that are running constantly throughout the day to maintain the efficiency. So maybe the air exchange system is running constantly to have, to have air exchanged throughout the building throughout the day. Perhaps in an older building, that may or may not be occurring. You know, I know in my former district, at times before, prior to the pandemic, a lot of the fans, the motors, the actuator, some of the components of the HVA system, the rooftop units weren't all working. And once we turned, we were able to turn those on and were running them consistently 24 hours a day, we saw a spike in electricity. So I think that's part of it. In terms of the other buildings, right now, taking a look at the electricity for the other two buildings, between the electricity and the remainder of the utility budget and the heating budget, I think that we will be able to stay within the confines of the funds for those buildings without having as much of a spike as the elementary school. So, but that's something too that we're watching closely. But I think we should be okay for the other buildings.
Just the irony of the efficiency costing more money to be efficient is not lost. So I know it's a lot of work for you to go line by line and pick where you can or hope to be able to make these things happen. So I do appreciate your time. It's just, it's definitely, it's interesting that the other, the other buildings aren't expected to go over their budget. And I know with the new school, it's hard to know what the budget was going to be in the first place. But it just seems like it's a lot more than I think we were anticipating.
I think everything is just so automated now as well. So with that efficiency, maybe come more systems that are being used. All of, perhaps all of the smart boards, you know, all of the technology that's constantly running, you know, that might come into play. It's, it is, but it is interesting. My husband is building a new school now and he was just trying to protect his utilities for the new building in Dennis Yarmouth. And I gave him a word of caution about what we have faced. And, you know, as an anecdote, he was presenting last night to the selectmen in one of the towns and that was the exact question that was asked about if this building is so energy efficient, how, what are the costs going to be? So. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just say that there were discussions at the building committee. So Andrea and I'm sure Bethany remember that there were discussions and there were estimates that were used to develop this budget. But I guess an estimate isn't always exact, unfortunately. Brendan, did you, oh, Andrea.
Yeah, I just also want to mention square footage.
Right.
It's a very large building comparatively. So it's important that you just kind of keep, you know, keep that in mind. So if you took the two buildings and you compared those utility costs and projected out and figured it out with Dicas and Minor together and then add the square footage, you know, just be interesting math, I think.
Brendan?
I actually did just have one question. I've heard you say that, you know, it was like a perfect storm of things going wrong. So I mean, should we anticipate that these bills are going to be this high next year and in the coming years for this building? Or is it kind of like a learning curve and next year, we're not going to have, you know, like the problems we had with the, what was it? We had like water leaks or something like, I mean, is this what it's going to be or is this just kind of a bad, you know, worst case scenario this year? And the next year will kind of be more towards what we had originally planned or what?
So we can't, I don't think that I can predict the future. But I think now that we have a year, we have a better baseline to look back. And also, you know, hopefully the utility costs will sort of moderate and we can have a better prediction of that. We did, one step that we did take was to sign up for a different supplier for Wareham Elementary School in the last few months. All of the buildings had a different electric supplier, which was supposed to be a better rate. And for some reason, that didn't happen with Wareham Elementary School. So we signed up just recently and the first bill that we should see, hopefully, a decrease in some of the supplier charges should hit in the next few weeks. So that'll give us even more information. And also, you know, for the summer, now we know, maybe we do have to run those dehumidifiers a lot more than we did. So that increases the electric consumption. So things like that, I think we're learning as we go. So we're smarter now, perhaps we know more now. But I'm sure there are other things that we'll learn along the way as well. So we just have to adapt.
All right. So is there a motion to approve this transfer as presented?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3-0-0.
Thank you.
Okay. So next on the agenda is the Commonwealth of Mass Virtual Schools. Dr. DeAndrea?
Thank you. Good evening. So yes, CMVS, Commonwealth of Massachusetts Virtual Schools. There are two virtual schools in Massachusetts. Greenfield Commonwealth School and Tech Connections Academy. These are public schools that our students can enroll in. The state of Massachusetts allows for 2% of the entire student population in the state to be enrolled in these schools. And they also allow for individual towns to cap the number or percentage of their students who attend these schools at 1%. Right now, Wareham has 13 students enrolled in these two schools, a total of 13 students. I believe we're under that 1%, well, that would be under the 1%. But the school committee has in the past voted to cap at 1%. The state asks us to revisit this vote every year. So I think it would be good to cap it at 1%. Each student who goes does bring about $9,000 with the student that comes out of our budget. So I ask that you vote to keep it at that 1% cap.
Okay. Are there any questions? So if I, quick math, 1% would be 19 or 20 students. So there's room.
That's correct.
It's like 0.06% or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. If there are no questions, I'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 3-0-0.
Thank you.
Okay. So next is the article for spring town warrant.
Correct. So right now, we have submitted the warrant article for the roof at the middle school. Derek Sullivan, the town administrator, has been really helpful in helping us work with the Capitol Committee to look at potentially putting warrant articles for new school buses, for a few new school buses, which would be welcome. And we also would like to submit a warrant article for the McKinney Vento reimbursement for transportation that we have received. It is approximately $35,000 that we are eligible for that goes into the town. In order for the town to transfer it to the school, we need a warrant article vote at town meeting. So what I'm asking for this evening is for the school committee to vote, to submit a warrant article that would ask the town to transfer the money from the town to the school department.
Okay.
And Jamie, we have to read it for the record, right?
Yes, please. Where is it?
Huh?
You see the way I wrote it?
She said the way she wrote it. Yeah.
Which is the warrant art, the motion?
Does anyone have any questions? Are you volunteering to read it?
Sure. I moved that the town of Wareham vote to transfer $35,711 in McKinney Vento revenue received in FY '22 to the school transportation revolving account.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 3-0-0.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is the past evening's school semester two update, Jane Fondulas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Okay.
So the past night's school program, we just completed our first semester. We are into our second week of the second semester. At the end of January, we had eight students who successfully completed their requirements to receive their diploma in June. And we currently have six that are enrolled this semester that once completed in June, they will be graduating. So we should have a total of 14 graduating seniors in June. Currently, we have 32 students enrolled, of which five are school choice. This is our, we are into our year and a half, being moved over to the high school. So we have settled in and things are going well. I'm very pleased that we've been able to bring onboard many partners that are embracing our night school program. One in particular, we are starting on March 7th, an eight week pilot, is the First Generation Investors Club. They reached out to us. They have chapters in many colleges. And they focus on personal finance, what is a stock, what is a bond, mutual funds, personal finance. It's an hour long session for eight weeks. The really nice thing is they're tutors. So we're going to be in person every Tuesday night. But on the big screen will be, they call them tutors. And they are from, they're seniors from Northeastern Harvard, MIT, Chapel Hill. So it's a great opportunity for our kids to see the other colleges out there. They chose us because we are an economically disadvantaged district. And the nice thing is, is each student, they're going to have to do a capstone presentation at the end, but each student is going to receive $100 that they will invest. They're going to teach them how to invest and they will create their own portfolio. If the student is 18 years old, when we end the program on May 2nd, that portfolio is theirs with that $100. That's their portfolio to take with them. If they're not 18, then it's held. They have access to it to watch it and to keep working at it. But they can't actually have it until they're 18 because that's the law. So that's going to start on March 7th and go for eight weeks. And then we're continuing our partnership with the Mass Higher Grade in New Bedford workforce. They've been great for our night school kids. So they're going to start again in March. They're going to meet with all of our kids. And then they're going to survey them. Instead of us choosing some programs that we think they want to participate in, they're going to survey the students. So they have a whole menu. So maybe some of the kids might, are interested in job shadowing, resume writing. They also do a great SEL, Social Emotional Learning, mini series of vision boarding. They do interactive gaming. So they have a whole list of connective, connecting activities. So they'll be with us in March, twice in April and twice in May. Plus they will place a lot of our students, if they still need jobs, in job placement for summer employment. So that's where we're at right now.
Wow. So many great opportunities.
So we have seven students that have enrolled in the First Generation Investors Club. So they will be our pilot group. The intent is in the fall, we want to offer this class as a five credit elective. Because right now, we also offer another financial literacy course. So my goal is every graduating senior in the future will do this program as well as the financial literacy.
Wow, that's great. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to say that sounds like an amazing, I mean, that's, you always hear people say, you know, I wish they taught this kind of class at school.
Right.
That sounds, I wish I had something like that. We did well at stocks. We played with it in DECA class, you know. We were given a fake, you know, $1,000 account.
Fake monopoly money.
Yeah, monopoly money. The fact that they have the opportunity to actually, you know, get the real world advantage to see how this works and to see how their money goes into play, that's amazing. Congratulations. That's a great.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to actually sitting in on it and getting some tips. From my retirement years, yeah.
32, is that higher than years past?
We are growing back to where we used to be. When the pandemic happened, of course, we all shut down. But when school was able to come back for the 2021 school year, we were still completely remote because of the distancing. We were here, if you remember.
Right.
So we couldn't do it. So then, so that's why we're really only a year and a half back in full swing and located at the high school. So we're slowly starting to get more kids, but we lost a few due to COVID. But, you know, a lot more are interested in it. And I mean, COVID has created a situation for a lot of students that they're not going to graduate traditionally during day school when they thought they were because they've lost credit or, you know. So we're starting to see a rise.
So you're giving us options.
But really, we don't really want more than 40, 45. Because we like to keep the class sizes small. Because for a lot of our students, they're there because of, you know, many issues.
Do you think being in a high school makes a difference?
At first, we weren't sure. At first, we were a little skeptical. But we have, when you enter the high school, we're in the whole foyer there.
Yeah, I've seen the kids at night.
Before the gym. So we're very contained and it's working out very well. Yeah.
Okay, good. April, do you have any questions?
I don't. I just, I know I've been to, you know, so, the past few years, past graduations and it's amazing that we have this as an alternative to offer so many kids that need it. Is five typical of a school choice amount into the district or is that lower or?
That's just for this semester. We had some for, this is just this semester. We have five currently school choice. And then we do have students who are coming to us just taking a course and they pay. So if they're out of district, they pay 300 and something for a course. Or if they're in district, say they're a senior and they're missing one class, they come to us and they pay 160 for a course. So we do have some of those students as well. But these, we have five full time school choice right now.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the update.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. In my report, you'll see a list of payroll and bill warrants from the past couple of weeks. And I ask that you vote to approve these warrants.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? 3-0-0.
Thank you.
All right. That was a short superintendent's report.
It was.
No gifts. No one loves us.
I know, no gifts. I'm sorry.
Terrible.
So next, we'll move on to the school committee report from Policy Review. So April.
Okay. So on the 8th, the Policy Review Committee did meet and we have a few policies to go over. I do just want to, on the library materials selection and adoption, I was asked if we could hold that vote until Kevin and Jeff are able to be at the meeting in case they have any questions. So I won't go through that policy tonight. So the first policy that the review committee went over was the entrance age for kindergarten. And if Bethany wants to come to speak to that, it was presented to the committee. And as to the reasons why it had been originally changed was due to a, I believe at the time, a funding caveat and it was asked to change back. So Bethany can speak to that.
Yes, thank you. So currently, our entrance age for kindergarten is October 1st. It is one of the latest dates in our Commonwealth. The most common is August 31st and September 1st with 108 towns with August 31st and then 112 towns.
with August thir, August thirty-first, and then a hundred twelve towns with Aug, September first. So I am suggesting that we move the date to the common date of the Commonwealth, which is that August thirty-first date.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Any of the questions I had had were, were asked and answered during the policy review meeting, where Dr. DeAndrea and Bethany again both spoke to this and about retention and readiness of the students that age and the benefit of having an August thirty-first date from their expertise and witnessing what has worked well for the district. So that's why the, the policy review committee voted unanimously to support the change in this policy. So if, if anyone was ready to vote for this, to change the date from October first to August thirty-first, other than that, the remainder of the policy remained intact.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the policy with the changes?
Second.
All those favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, three, zero, zero. Thank you, Bethany.
So the next one, because I'm just going in order of how they are listed in our packet, was the concussion policy. We did ask to change, it was only listed as K through twelve, and whereas we have pre-K housed in public school, we wanted to make sure that this policy did cover our preschool students as well. And it was mainly a policy that really only mentioned sports-related head injuries. It did not necessarily have any wording that had to do with anything that would happen during school necessarily. So we did add the words "school and sports-related head injuries." I can attest to my captain head injury of a child, that all of his occurred at school and had nothing to do with sports. Lockers can be dangerous. And playground equipment. So other than that, that policy also remained intact. It was just to add the word "school" to encompass school and sports and to change it from K through twelve to pre-K through twelve.
Okay. Any questions or, okay. I just have one question. So you say to include pre-K, so at the high school, we have grade thirteen also, is that?
Yeah, you might want to.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I mean, if we're changing it for that reason?
That's a good point, just make sure.
I would, I would be okay, yeah. I think changing it from PK to thirteen, I think that's something that we weren't even thinking of when we had, that no one, you know, brought it to our attention. So because it's such a small percentage, I don't think we were thinking of that at all. But I agree that it should cover any student enrolled in any of our schools.
Okay. So do you want to just change your motion to?
Yeah. Can we change that to, do we want to change the wording to all Wareham students?
No, just pre-K through thirteen.
Pre-K through grade thirteen, okay.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, three, zero, zero.
Okay, thank you. And again, we are holding the library materials. So the next one would be, this is an AIDS immune deficiency and school attendance policy. This policy has come from the Centers of Disease Control, and it was voted to, because the likelihood of this having to be enacted, and from when it was adopted in nineteen eighty-seven, just to, it was remaining in place, and there were no changes to this policy.
Okay. Any questions?
And it also noted that Dr. DeAndrea did cancel all of the school nurses before this went to the committee, and they all agreed with keeping it as is.
So there's no, sometimes there's references to laws or things that change, but there's none of that?
Anything, I believe, anything that referenced any MGL was verified that it was the most current version during the meeting, and it was found that there is really nothing that was relevant to changing.
Okay. Have a motion to approve with no changes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, three, zero, zero.
And that is all that we had for policy review. We have one more meeting next month. We have had a couple of items that had been tabled throughout our course of the year, so it could be a, could be a lengthy meeting, as we were looking to verify certain law changes and gather more information regarding certain things. So the next time I present, might have a lot more for you guys to vote on. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. So any other business that we haven't discussed that's come up? Okay. So before we adjourn, I just want to go back to Dr. DeAndrea, what you said about buses and possibly town meeting and working with the town administrator. So I just want to say thank you for working with Mr. Sullivan, and he's always been very supportive of the schools.
Yeah, thank you.
We're very fortunate.
We are very fortunate. He's tremendously supportive.
Mm-hmm.
And I do just want to remind people that at six-thirty at the high school, we have former Wareham alum Stephen Cooper and Josh Anadjiogu speaking to the community and raising funds to give back to the community, who are both, one currently playing in the NFL and one former player in the NFL. So to have two, two kids from Wareham that had gone on to such a, a great national stage is, is great, and the fact that they're here tonight at our school to give back to the community is pretty cool.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.